I'd like to call this special meeting of the Library Board of Trustees for the Palm Springs Public Library to order. Can I have you call the role, please, Jeanne?
Sure, Craig Barba.
Present.
David Kelly.
I'm here.
Ed McBride.
Here.
Kathy Warmick.
Here.
All present and accounted for.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is set aside for public comments. And I don't know, Jeanne, if we have a list of those who would like to make a comment. You're limited to three minutes, so who do you have signed up?
I have Nancy Morrison, if any, and then the foundation members are here. I don't know if they wanted to to have time for public comment, too, but Nancy Morrison's our first one, so.
Nancy?
Hi, so I just really wanted to take a moment to talk about the foundation. I actually was involved with the foundation when it first started five years ago. And I have to say that under David Sidley's direction, the foundation is really starting to gain momentum. It's really sad that COVID happened to happen just when things were going so well. But I do think, you know, this is a volunteer position. And I think he's doing an outstanding job of getting people to join. And I think it has a great future with him leaving it. The other comment that I'd like to make is in regards to the loan. And I know there was a lot of discussion about it, and I know that's what you're going to talk about this evening. One thing I would like to mention is that perhaps if there is concern about the loan getting an extension, how much should we pay? I think that there is enough money to pay the loan off. So perhaps we could just pay the loan off and then just take out a new loan. And that way, it shows on the record that we sealed our agreement in a timely manner and then just start a new loan fresh. Just another idea to put out there. And that's about it, and I wish the foundation well.
Thank you, Nancy. I know that some, there are some other members from the foundation board who didn't sign up to speak, but sure, I think we could probably make an exception if any of you'd like to make a comment before we get started. Okay. So we're here tonight to discuss a really important process or a point in our relationship with our library foundation. And I wanted to also probably echo a little bit about what Nancy said. I think that David and the current board has been working so hard to recruit some really fine members and members of our community. And yes, unfortunately, COVID hit. We were ready to raise millions of dollars to build a new building. But I think that the foundation is here to stay and they're ready to get to work and have already started thinking about ways that they can kick off an endowment campaign. I'm going to, I think we all have had our, the letter from David, so we've had a chance to read that. And I want to get into reviewing that. But before I do, I was going to see, David, did you want to make any comments about your letter or add anything to that at this point before we get started?
Thanks, Ed. Excuse me, I think the letter kind of speaks for itself. And maybe I'll just be available for questions once the discussion's over.
Okay, thank you. What I would like to do, if it's okay with the trustees, is that I would like for us to do two motions tonight, just for the record. We've got two separate requests from the foundation board. And I think we should make, have a motion on each of those, have discussion, and then vote on both of those two ideas or two proposals. So the first one is that the foundation has requested that we forgive this loan in entirety. So I was wondering if I could get a motion for us to put that on the table for consideration and discussion.
So moved, but is that the current request?
That's one of them. There's two in the letter. So the first one is the, so thank you, Kathy. So the, it's my understanding, David, that the, the foundation would prefer that this promissory note be forgiven in its entirety, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So trustees, let's discuss that. We've had that proposal and kind of talked about in previous meetings. And are there any questions, thoughts? And then we can definitely do a vote on it and see where we are with that.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that there's, there may be a motion, but there's no second. And then, second of all, it would be helpful for me, since I did spend some considerable time reviewing Mr. Sidley's letter, whether or not he has some comment for my letter, which actually raises a third proposal.
Yeah, and I think that what I was wanting to do, David, I thought I heard a second. Is someone seconding the motion? I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, all right, so then that right there by, by process means that that motion has failed, so that option is off of the table. So forgiving the loan is not something that we wish to pursue. So the, the second option, and David, I, my intention was to also give you the option to explain your letter as the support for the third option as well. So do I have anybody that would like to make a motion for the second option?
I will. I've so.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that one, so we could have?
If we state it, that's the repayment of $5,000.
That's correct.
Of the loan for three years.
That is correct. So we've got a motion on the table for an extension of 36 months, a payment of $5,000. Do I have a second so we can have discussion on this?
For the purpose of a discussion, I will second.
Okay. All right, so David, would you like to discuss this now, or you want to ask questions of David Sidley? Was that what you wanted to do?
No, I have really no questions for David Sidley, other than, you know, I wrote a letter to him and I wanted to know what his response was. So if you would like me to review the letter for the benefit of everyone here and for the members of the public, I mean, let me just add, you know, I totally agree with what's already been said to, about the foundation. And I'm certainly in support of the foundation, and my letter was fully in support of the foundation. I wasn't in support of the two proposals that was, you know, sent up by the, by the foundation. And in, you know, if it, if it's instructive for everybody, for me to go through my letter in detail, I will do that.
So David, can, in regard to the, the, the option that's on the table right now, are you saying that you, you are not supporting that option? Or do you have something you'd like to add to that option in some sort of a modification? Is that, I'm sorry to ask that question, but is that?
If it makes it any easier, could you refer to me as Mr. Kelly or Kelly or something else?
I'm sorry.
Between the two of us, we won't get confused.
Trustee Kelly, would you like to make some comment about the current option on the table?
Sure, I would love to. Especially since my proposal is one where instead of a $5,000 payment, it's a $10,000 payment. And instead of a three-year maturity, it's a one-year maturity. And I think, you know, if you'd like me to go through the details on that, I will. And, you know, the things I asked Jeanne is whether or not I could actually be permitted to share the letter on the screen. So if she's giving me permission to share the screen, I will, I will do that right at this point.
I can't do that, but I have the letter on my screen and I can share it if you want me to do that.
Thank you.
One moment.
No, thank you. That's pretty good.
And tell me to scroll if I need to scroll or?
Okay, no, that's good. Thank you. Well, as you can see, this letter is dated June 8th. So that was, I think that was a Monday following the Friday when we received Mr. Sidley's letter. And I say, I'm in receipt of your letter to Ed McBride and the Litton Library Board of Trustees dated June 5th, 2020. And as treasurer of the trustees, I feel it's my responsibility to respond in kind, and by that I mean in writing. Like you with the foundation, I am relatively new to the trustees. In my review, the minutes of the trustees, it was announced in September 2018 that your predecessor resigned. The next month, I attended my first trustee meeting before being sworn in as a trustee and a treasurer in January of 2019. It was an exciting time for the library. On January 29th, 2019, the city of Palm Springs and the library held a library retreat at the convention center. Participants included representatives from nearly every imaginable constituency. This community engaged and a settlement propelled the city council appointment of a committee to examine possible sites for a new library. By the end of the year, all parties agreed to renovate and perhaps expand the library's existing site. It was in April of that year that you first came before the trustees with plans to reestablish the foundation board and to organize and update all formal filings and required financial reports. That was from the Palm Springs Public Library Foundation 2018 annual report. The report noted that the foundation board members participated in the January library retreat and provided feedback in the final plan document. It further stated that the foundation expected to accept a request for preliminary design of a capital campaign following the action by the city council. Finally, the report stated that $10,000 of the $100,000 loan from the trustees had been repaid. A year later, at the March 2020 trustee meeting, we received the foundation's 2019 annual report. The report stated a fundraising goal of $50,000 in 2020 and $100,000 in 2021. Among the 13,500 expenditures to attain these goals, $1,000 is attributed to day-to-day development and management.
Sorry.
$10,000 to hire a contractor, Buzz Factory, for an awareness campaign, marketing plan, and annual fund collateral materials, and 2,500 for annual fund solicitation letters. Financial statements dated February 16th, 2020 showed 33,779 in checking and money market balances and an annuity forethought valued at 53,436.29. Assuming the 86,130 referenced in your letter of June 2nd, 2020 is the current total of your combined assets, the foundation has reduced total assets by $1,085.47 since your February 16th, 2020 statement date. Further, the report showed total income of $1,308.29 for the period of January 1st, 2019 through February 16th, 2020, and expenses of $2,813.40 for a total deficit of $1,505.11. The report shows no cash donations from foundation board members. Expenses included payments to David, President David Sidley, likely consisting of reimbursements for other expenses of the foundation, for example, advertising, postage, delivery, and taxes. The 2019 annual report states the foundation, quote, "is on track with its timeline to be ready when the city announces its final plans." Among the accomplishments stated in the report are, one, appointment of three new board members; two, formation of a finance committee; three, the election of a new treasurer and secretary; four, sponsorship of the foundation's participation in the legacy wall at the library by two foundation board members; five, the same board members donated 10 children's magazine subscriptions for a foundation promotion; six, and preliminary discussions with Buzz Factory on an awareness and marketing campaign. Foundation's request. Your letter of June 2nd asks the trustees to either, one, forgive the remaining $90,000 owed on the existing $100,000 note, or, two, accept a payment of $5,000 towards the balance owed and extend the note an additional 36 months to June 1st, 2023. The current note is due on July 1st, 2020. The letter references foundation plans to place $30,000 in an endowment fund and have the public match it. The foundation currently has an annuity forethought valued at $53,436.29 as of 2/16/2020, which could be set aside for such a purpose. If matched, this would complete the foundation's 2020 fundraising goal of $50,000. The current checking and money market balance of $33,779.18 as of 2/16/2020 could be used to finance debt reduction and the 13,500 in fundraising expenses already anticipated for 2020. Recommendation. The foundation experienced management challenges over the five-year life of the loan. In your recent letter and the 2019 annual report, the foundation expressed confidence the management issues are part of its past. However, the foundation is an all-volunteer organization, and there is no guarantee that any agreement made today will be completed by current management within a 36-month timeframe. The two years of financial statements show no cash donations directly to the foundation from past or present board members. Past marketing campaigns have been financed to raise community awareness of the foundation, but without any fundraising effort behind them. Past found, excuse me, past foundation fundraising has been promised primarily in response to city council proposals which have yet to materialize. The foundation has now set fundraising benchmarks of $50,000 for 2020 and $100,000 in 2021. It should be held accountable for those benchmarks. I am recommending the Library Board of Trustees accept a second $10,000 payment towards the original note of $100,000 due July 1st, 2020. I also recommend that upon receipt of payment, a new note in the amount of $80,000 be agreed to between the foundation and the trustees to retire the old note with a new expiration date of July 1st, 2021. One-year maturity, again, without provision for interest. The new note will give the foundation the flexibility to continue its current operations, finance its initial fundraising plans, and provide much-needed experience for its board to perform the functions intended to benefit the library. I expect upon execution of the new note, the foundation will continue to make periodic reports to the trustees about its operations, fundraising, and financial reports. I also expect the foundation will make a timely presentation of its 2020 annual report for the period July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, at the March 21st, March 2021 Board of Trustees meeting, if not sooner. It is my hope that the foundation grows into the organization it's always meant to be. These are challenging times. Draw strength from the knowledge that in the recent city council budget meetings, dozens of citizens wrote letters and testified in public in support of the library. Our library is a beloved institution and deserves the energy and attention an actively-run foundation can provide. I wish you well and will continue to provide counsel and support. Yours sincerely, David Kelly, Treasurer, Library Board of Trustees. So in summary, this was a letter that I submitted to both our president of the trustees and to our Director of Library Services in hopes that it could be actually thought of and responded to by the foundation, given the timeframe and given enough timeframe before our meeting that was originally scheduled last week. It took some time for me to actually get the letter actually distributed, although I think that's another discussion. Perhaps I don't, I really don't understand why there's letters that really, that come to the president, or come from the president of the Board of Trustees directly to the trustees, and then my communications don't. But again, that's probably another discussion for another day. But it did make it into the trustee packet, which I'm grateful for. And, and I really can't explain anything else. The only other issue I have is that when we do vote on this, I do want people who, all of us as Board of Trustees to actually to discuss our conflicts so that the public understands from the position that we're voting on. Thank you.
Okay. I was on mute. So at this point, we have a motion to accept the second proposal from the foundation. Trustee Kelly is making a recommendation to basically offer a third option. So at this point, let's, let's have some discussion about both options and see if between the two, we can't come up with what would be a solution that will benefit everyone, including the trustees and the foundation. So trustees, do you have any additional comments about what we just heard from trustee Kelly?
Am I not on mute?
Oh, you're on.
I'm, I guess I'm not in agreement with trustee Kelly's proposal. I would be more inclined to accept the second recommendation of the foundation. The difference between 5,000 and 10,000 isn't that important. But I do think the foundation needs some time under new leadership to basically carry out what they, what they need to do. And so I would much prefer the three-year term that they proposed. The reason I didn't go further or say anything for the first proposal is that this is public money, and I think we have an obligation regarding public money to, to, to guard it. But we've and I'm also new to the trustees, I mean, very, very new. I think I've been on, Jeanne, have I been on a whole year? I don't think so, maybe. But we're all new. And maybe not Ed, but the rest of us are, and Nancy, but the rest of us are fairly new. And I know that the trustees have been trying to recreate their organization. I did have a concern that with the trustees, and maybe just a question, as it's an interesting question to me that they hadn't asked any members of the trustees for donations. That, that's something I would be interested in as to why. But I much prefer the three-year term to give them time and not. I think we have to treat this almost as a new proposal, and I would be happy if it was a new note and, but that it had a three-year term.
Okay, I guess, David, answer where I have, I'm also a member of the foundation, so I'm putting that out there, beginning with. Everything said about the foundation, I think, is true. They're off to a great start now. It's very sad the pandemic started for many reasons. I came up, I'm sorry, a fourth proposal. After reading the foundation's request, I was in the same feeling that Mr. Kelly was of $10,000. And I was concerned because of the pandemic that one year is too short. And I was, I hate to stand, I'm cutting the baby in half here, but I was looking at 18 months with every six months a report and an update on the status. One of the things that I thought of, Mr. Kelly, while you were speaking, and maybe the foundation can address this, there was a fundraiser done at Smoke Tree, which I attended. And I've never seen any results of that financially, but there, there has been a fundraiser done. And I heard the figure 30,000, but I, I don't know if that's true or not. Maybe, Ed, you can address that. So on the 10,000, I'm there on that. One year for me is too short. They need some more time here. People aren't going to be able to do anything for at least another six months to a year anyway.
Trustee Kelly, any response to what you've heard in terms of compromise of looking at a longer term, but accepting the $10,000 payment? What do you think? You're on mute.
Thank you. I do appreciate the comments from my fellow trustees. Yeah, I, my, certainly my letter was not going to be the where-all, be-all, or whatever. And I do respect the desire to take note of the fact that there's a COVID crisis going on. I think in any, in any case, a year for me is really just, really just a matter of just, just drafting a new document. So if 12 months had gone by and nothing had happened, we'd be back here talking again. And that's the reason why we're doing that. That's why it was proposed in the 12 months. But if, you know, if an extra six months is amenable to everybody involved, I think it's, you know, that's fine, too. The one other thing I'm thinking about, though, is that right now, at least I remember from the last conversation that we had at our last board meeting, there was a bequest that the, the foundation had received. I know those tend to take a little time to, to run through the system. It would also be interesting to know since, since the original proposal was done at the beginning of this month and, and Mr. Sidley's been aware of my letter, what, you know, are we any closer to his $50,000 goal for the end of this year? Which, I suppose if I knew that at the next board meeting we were going to meet, and all of a sudden there was a $50,000 payment that, or not a $50,000 payment, but $50,000 that was raised over, you know, that period of time, probably not our next meeting, because that's next week. But even by the time we return in September, then I would, then I would wonder about the wisdom of not having it at 12 months, because you're that close to performing as you were expecting to perform. So I guess that's why I would like to hear some, something from the foundation at this point.
Sure. In response to your letter, Mr. Kelly, your email and letter was followed immediately almost by an email from President McBride stating that there wasn't an official response and that we would discuss it at this meeting. So that's why I waited to respond. In your letter, you state that the foundation has received no financial support from any of the board members, and that is not true. We do not publish the names of our donors, and that's why you probably don't know about that. In terms of repaying the, or raising $50,000, we have formed a fundraising committee and since the last time we met, and we have drafted a proposal internally for creating the endowment. Our finance committee has done that. We are trying to come up with creative ways to raise money at this point because we don't want to do piecemeal things and raise a couple hundred dollars here and a couple hundred dollars there, because obviously we can't do anything in person. And there's no way of knowing when we can do something in person safely. And that's a huge question mark above kind of everything that's happening, and it's really too bad. So to answer your question, we have not raised $50,000 yet. I don't know if you have any other more specific questions. I'm happy to answer them.
David Sidley, could, can you elaborate on the finance committee? I'm sorry, I missed the last meeting, so I'm, can you tell a little more about what you guys are working on in terms of an endowment?
Yeah, you know what, I just have a, I just got a draft proposal for, for how to create the, or not how to create them, but what the endowment would mean. And I haven't, it isn't final, so I don't want to share it yet. But the finance committee is led by a professional financial planner and two other people that I feel like know what they're doing. And I'm happy to share that, the endowment proposal, once we have it finalized.
Well, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the second, the motion that was made.
Great.
I'd like, I'd like to amend it to say that the, the requested payment would be $10,000 and the requested term be 18 months. And that a new note would be issued to review, to reflect the, the new note amount of $80,000 that would be due in 18 months from the date that this one is due July 1st, 2020.
I'm not sure I want to accept the amendment. I still think that 18 months is short, given that we're in the middle of I still think that 18 months is short, given that we're in the middle of a COVID crisis that could could depend, it really depends on getting a vaccine, which although Dr. Fauci is optimistic, is not here. And we don't know how that will be distributed and when that will allow group meetings. So I I do feel that we need more time given the crisis. I would accept a friendly amendment. Ed, do you have a suggestion on that?
I mean, I, I, I agree with the, I think the $10,000 payment would would be an amendment. I too am concerned about 18 months because of just where we are with the pandemic and the ability for the foundation to to pull together any fundraising that quickly. How how about what we would say? Trustee Kelly is to put a little more, you know, the the original note included the annual report. And we just by history have asked the foundation to make a a report to us monthly whenever we meet. Maybe there's some sort of more reporting that we could get on the activities of the foundation so that you all of us fulfill their activity and things are happening. So that if we give them a 36 month time period as they requested and we see that something's not happening, then we can call before another review and have a discussion with them. I think that the the reporting right now could be tightened up and we could have more information flowing monthly in particular and not wait till an annual report to see how the financials are doing. Would would that be something that the trustees would consider as a compromise?
Well, can I?
I I would accept that.
I would just, yeah, thank you.
Motion, I would accept that.
Again, my reason for suggesting otherwise is that coming up with a maturity date gets people to the table. And we can have a more meaningful discussion, in my opinion, because in the last five years, no matter what the reporting was, no matter who was running the organization, there wasn't the performance that I would have expected given what was actually promised for this particular loan. I'm confident that Mr. Sidley is aware that right now there's a little bit more scrutiny on that at this point. And I think it's helpful to actually maintain that scrutiny in the form of having a maturity date that doesn't go beyond the reasonable scope of the management of this organization. One of the things that I pointed out in my letter was that having a five year term made it that nobody was being held accountable during that period of time. And having a shorter note adds more accountability.
I'm just concerned a shorter note will put us right back to having this discussion and will not have given them some more time to be successful that I I just feel strongly.
Can I suggest that we look at two years as a compromise here with reports every six months, but go to two years? Pandemic is really going to not allow people to gather for at least a year. So they can do the planning during that first year. In the second year, they could be having their their fundraisers or whatever they're developing.
I I think that if this organization actually just raised money just among its foundation members, that they would be a long ways along on this goal of raising $50,000 as they expect to for this year. And I know that there are a lot of organizations that are still raising money even in this COVID crisis. As a matter of fact, they're using the COVID crisis as a fundraising tool. There's no reason to think that this isn't a unique opportunity for the library to raise money.
All right, so I would like to and I'm sorry, I'm, you guys, it's been a very long week for me. Please excuse my my tiredness here, but help me refresh my memory on, I don't know, I don't think I can make a motion or modify a motion as chair. I think that we have to have someone else do that.
That's correct.
Well, you can't. But we've got a motion on the table, which is two years or three years and $10,000 and more reporting. I think you were the second on that motion. Do you want to make an amendment to it to go to two years?
I would.
Then I will accept that.
Craig Borba was the second, actually.
Yeah, Craig was the second.
Craig was, will you accept that, Craig?
Yes. All right, so before us then, the motion now says that we would grant the foundation a 24 month payback with a new note with enhanced monthly reporting on the financials and their progress towards their goals and a $10,000 payment to be made now towards the note. Also, I would, I would also, Jeannie, can you please clarify? The city attorney and when you were seeking advice for us, the city attorney would want this presented to him and he would make a recommendation on how the note would look and and the creation of an actual note. Is that correct?
Yeah, he was very positive in that it would be very simple for him to rewrite a new note or re-up this for 36 months. So he said it would, it would be a simple process. So the one, the one thing that it was that he wanted to, that typically when you redo a loan, you need, you need some consideration. And it sounds like the $10,000 is a is a good consideration for that.
Before we vote on this, can we hear from the foundation in terms of, is this workable for you?
Yeah, we can, I I do think it's workable. You know, the only wild card is the pandemic. And and I and I heard what you said, Mr. Kelly, about taking an opportunity. I think I think that's something that we should definitely explore. But I think it seems reasonable.
Okay, so you can, you can live with this.
I think so.
Okay.
I'd like to call the vote.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to call the vote.
All right, so those in favor of accepting this motion, please roll call, please.
Yes, so the motion is by Kathy Warmick with the second by Craig Borba, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so Craig Borba.
Yes.
Dana Kelly.
Yes.
Ed McBride. Kathy Warmick.
Yes.
The motion has passed.
Right, so the, Jeannie, you and I can work together to pull this together and present it to the city attorney and have him start working on the new notes and getting that in front of us for review and then over to the foundation. And so David, can you maybe be prepared at the meeting next week to share as much as you possibly can about the endowment and the plans, if you have it? Or at least start talking to us about, you know, what you guys are working on?
Yes.
All right, I have a question for David. David?
Sidley?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there requirement or amount of money that the members of the foundation are to contribute on an annual basis?
No.
Okay.
I I'm sorry, Craig, do you mean the 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 board or the members who, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Members of the, the board members of the foundation. Do they have an annual contribution that they're to make?
No, but there's something we can definitely talk about at the next meeting. It's not a bad idea.
Well, I mean, I I would, I would just add that as a member of the the committee that's recruiting board members, we are asking and it put it setting the expectation for board members that some sort of contribution will be made by board members. So I, is that what you're asking, Craig?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
But that would generate obviously funds. And on the boards that I'm on, there is a contribution that is required.
Every board, every board I've been on except for, well, even this one, but I mean, some sort of contribution, yeah. So David, I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you. You were saying, David Sidley, excuse me.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it is not written in the bylaws, but we do set that expectation up when recruiting. It's set up, something that we might consider in the future.
I think it's very important in growing out to the community and in my experience of working in other foundations raising money. If we can say to the community that our board has made personal contributions to 100%, it goes a long way towards self-telling the community that we believe in what we're asking. So I would urge the the foundation board to discuss that and to make sure that everyone, it doesn't have to be. I I would hope that there, you know, if there's millions sitting out there, yes, people would contribute. But it's something for us to say that our board believes in this. And that's just my personal opinion on that.
We have the other members of the foundation board introduce. I'm not, since I'm not a board member, I'm just thrilled that you're here and would like to know who you are.
Really? Can we start with the secretary, Terry Dean? Terry, can you introduce yourself? You're on mute. There you go.
You're still muted.
Jeannie, is there something you can do?
No, just Terry has issues with her sound. She's always so quiet on there.
Bill Wiley.
Hey, Bill.
Hi, how are you? It's great to be a part of the foundation board. And we're pulling some things together and I appreciate all of the discussion that's gone on. And as a part of the finance committee, we'll be moving forward very quickly here.
Terry, you'll try again? I just can't hear you. I know it's something great to hear, but I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Now we can, oh, yeah, we can. We're getting close. Try again. I don't know what, we heard you for a minute. I'm sorry. Well, David, maybe you could tell us a little bit about Terry and what she does for the for the foundation board.
That's, that's Terry Dean. She is the secretary of the foundation. She is great at what she does. She's been incredibly helpful to me personally, and I feel really lucky to have her on the board.
And Terry Dean was one of the very first people I met when I came here as the director. She and Sharon Applebaum said, we want to take you on lunch. And so I it's been almost eight years.
Robin?
Hi, can you hear, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Terry, on your computer, make sure that you've got the computer audio on. Maybe that's the problem that you have with when we don't hear you. So just for the future. Anyway, I just joined the foundation, so I'm really new. And I, at our, the first meeting that I just attended have raised my hand to help with fundraising and I am a firm believer that the board, the foundation, that the board members need to either give or get a certain amount of money and we'll, we'll figure out what that looks like. I'm a firm believer in that. And I'm very excited to be part of, I've lived in the Palm Springs now six years. I love libraries, I love reading. I'll be reaching out to meet more of you and I'm just really excited to be part of this process. And I mean, yes, now we've got to change a little bit because of the COVID thing. But as Mr. Kelly said, we've got to get creative here because we don't know how long this is going to be. And it doesn't mean we've got to stop. So we're going to come up with some really good, good creative ideas that haven't been thought about because a lot of places and people are going to be asking for money right now. So what's unique about us to get that money? And I know there's money out there. It's just like, how do we get our hands on it?
Great. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Trustees, any more questions for those that are present?
No, I just wanted to thank you. I know this has been a hard discussion, but I believe there is strong support for you on on the trustees. And thank you.
Thank you.
Um, before we leave, I'm, you guys got a note from Jeannie today trying to set the agenda for next week's meeting. And I, she asked me to bring this up. Are there any topics that she did not list that any of you would like for her to include? She needs to get the agenda out.
I have one, which is we've got a, the original memo which set up the trustees' responsibilities and roles as well as it was at the time that the money was given over to the city. And I'd like us just to discuss that as well. It's the first time I've seen it as a member of the trustees and I thought it was thought provoking.
Okay. Thank you. So Jeannie, can you add that to the topic for us to to review and and get some context around what what was going on? That was a result of the email that I did send per your request. So that was going to report on it, but we'll specifically put that on there. Thank you for reminding me.
Yes, I have this plan, I just need to give, give it a topic title. So yes, I think, I think it's the trust fund financials. I think probably that it would go under there because it talks about the role and how they're held.
Maybe just the trust fund role.
Yes.
In the city memo.
Okay.
And it also is coupled with the assurance that we got on the 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 funds not being commingled or being at risk of needing any kind of obligations that the city has to make up any deficits. So it kind of is coupled to that request that you guys had had put forward. We emailed everyone and got responses.
Yeah, are those responses going to be part of the package, Jeannie?
We can make it.
Say that again, I'm sorry, I was making.
The responses that we received from the city regarding the endowment.
Yes, I was looking for that, too, to something, I wasn't sure if it was just the email or if there was something more formal, but I think it was just the email, right? Yeah, we would include, I would include that, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll share with you what I've received. All right, thank you, guys, for coming together for this special meeting and let's wish the foundation well. And I think that we can adjourn the meeting. It is 6:18. And we will have a meeting, of course, next week. We'll come back together.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Thank you.